All right. It is seven o'clock. So I'm going to start the meeting and we'll call the meeting to order. And first of all, welcome everyone. A friendly reminder, if you have cell phones with you, please turn them on pilot or airplane mode. So they don't disrupt our meeting. And second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the government of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this soul, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll start out with some introductions. I'm Lisa Layland, I'm here. And to my left are council members Kathleen Repkin, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and Brian McGovern. And at the end, we have our city engineer with the WSB, Alan Malkey. And then we also have Emily Paulbus, who is our assistant administrator. And to my right, we have our administrator Jessica Cruz. And Brian Grimm is our finance director. And then sitting in for our new police chief is Sergeant Brown. And thank you, Sergeant Brown.
Sergeant August.
August Jackson. And then we also have a couple of staff members that are joining us via internet or remote. Then we have Meyerhoff, our city clerk, and David Abel, who is our community development director. And then if we have any legal questions, we have Sarah Samsala, who is with Kennedy and Grayson, our city attorney. So with that, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Underline, are there any additions or changes? Oh, thank you, Mr. Repkin, it's our second. Thank you, Mr. Gover, any further questions? We're none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
I have all those opposed, motion passes by both. So this evening, we have two people with us. First, we're going to start out with Commissioner Anderson. Welcome, Mr. Anderson, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you for taking time out. I know you're very, very busy visiting all of the cities in your district, and there are many. So we really appreciate you taking time out and sharing information with us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity. It's great to be out here. As you said, I'm Kevin Anderson, I'm the head of the county commissioner, serving District Seven, which includes sixteen communities in the western suburbs, including listed in our neighbor, the streets out here. I live in Maple Grove, so it's always wonderful to make it out of the parts of the district. I, so last year, I gave an update on the roles that Hennepin County plays and the way, different ways we show up in the community. We have approximately about twenty percent of the population of Minutrista receives some sort of support from Hennepin County, whether it's through food assistance, rental assistance, other ways that we show up and help residents here in Hennepin County, in addition to the roads and bridges and sheriff's department. All the other things that is available to every, every community across Hennepin County. I do want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to tell you, the presentation is wonderful. It has a lot of really great information. We'll try to kind of stick to the beginning parts of it, but I'm going to go off script. Tell you that right now, so don't try too hard to follow along. I do want to just give an update. We have a lot of road projects on the chair of the public works committee. Have been since I was elected five years ago. And continue to serve in that capacity as the chair of the public works. We have a lot of road projects happening, mostly maintenance projects, chip and seal, some overlays. In Minutrista, there's a bridge, some bridge work happening. I just wanted you to be aware of it. It's in the, we have some information here in the presentation that I provided you. Additionally, when we get onto the next page here, there's a lot of really good information about different opportunities that the county has for partnering with cities, especially around housing. We have, I know right now, cities are going to be working on the comprehensive plans and trying to make sure that you are meeting housing goals set forth by the council in different ways. I want you to know that Hennepin County is here as a partner to try to help bridge some of those, those gaps that might be presented to you if a housing developer comes and says, hey, we want to make something like this work that has some affordability component to it. The county can be a partner in trying to make some of that work. Outside of just tips, which is generally what cities have at their disposal, the county is here to help with anything that might be available. But here's where I'm going to go off script. So I've been spending a bit of time recently in my role as a board member for the Association of Minnesota Counties and as the, I'm the vice chair of the health committee for the National Association of Counties. And there are a lot of things happening, both at the state level and at the national level, that is going to very likely have a direct impact to counties and therefore the cities that are in. Specifically, there are a lot of talks about how these, the state and federal governments are going to challenge or push their budgets. And a lot of the cuts that they're talking about are not strictly cuts. They're cost shifts to counties and local governments. Specifically around Medicaid, Medicare. We have approximately eight hundred million dollars that comes from Medicaid that goes into caring for residents, including residents here in Minutrista. If those cuts that are currently being talked about go through, we don't necessarily know how we would make up that difference because it doesn't change eligibility requirement. So that would mean that we would have to find some other ways of dealing with the, the cost increases that would be shifted on to the county. Or we would have to accept lower levels of service that residents have come to. Or counties. Either often ends up being a hit for residents. And I wanted to bring this up and kind of sound some of the alarm right now because quite frankly, because the cuts or the cost shifts would likely end up being a combination of both things. It would be a raise in our property taxes, which I really don't want to do, and a decrease in the level of service that we could reprovide here. Both of those things seem really unacceptable to me when we can find other ways to move forward with this. I spent last week in DC talking to representatives, senators, bill staff, and committee staff, and departments from the new administration. And I think we are on a good path of finding an understanding. I have a kind back from those meetings, actually very hopeful. But I wanted to say that here, that if there is an opportunity that you see to partner and have conversations with your either state representatives or federal representatives, and just say, we understand that there's a budget crunch that we all have to address, but shifting the costs on to local governments, it's not a good idea. We need to find a better way of doing that. And the more unified we can speak in that voice, I think the better are all our residents. So that's kind of my off script. Because I really don't want us to be in a position here at the end of the year trying to figure out how we're going to make up a potential many million dollar football caused by cost shifts that the state or federal. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a lot of really good information that's in the packet around housing and as well as other grants. I know we've talked about youth sports grants and some other community funding, which we still have available. And I know that we've, we've had conversations about different parks that might be eligible for this. We'll continue watching for those applications as well. So happy to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about.
Well, I have a question. So around housing, first of all, as you know, we don't have public transportation out here. And so affordable housing out here is not, you know. And then, and especially since, and I mentioned this to our state legislative representatives as well. They're aware of it. But the problem that we have is cost. And we don't have to. And so I'm not sure that housing, affordable housing out here is really even a potential. Not that we don't want it, it's not, we're saying, no, we don't want it. It's, it's just not doable out here at this time. Maybe when there's more jobs out here, maybe when there's public transportation out here, then I think we can hit a little more serious about.
And I did want to just say, like affordable housing, I know especially in county departments, we often talk about thirty percent pay high or deeply affordable housing. Affordability has very widely, to start with, even some elements of like under market rate tend to technically fall alive for affordability or some kind of partnership.
And we would look at that a bit, of course, and so it's good to know. And then the other thing I want to mention is, and we have a couple of representatives here from Lake Minnetonka Conservation District, the LSBD. And I know they're looking for funding from the sheriff's department for more full-time water pool on Lake Minnetonka. I really hope that you are in support of that because it's not just a poor community issue. It's a regional issue. And as for many, many years, we've said, this needs to be more of a regional issue. And, and the region needs to pay for it other than just supporting cities that surround Minnetonka. So we really appreciate your support on that as well. Do you know, do you have to go and is this something that the board has to approve? Or is this just something that the sheriff would need to approve and go ahead?
So it would be something that the sheriff would approve through their budget. I know right now, the sheriff's budget has been, I mean, they're very constrained, especially with primarily finding people. And not necessarily in patrol divisions, but in the jail. We're, we're really facing a period of big crunch in the jail. Workers who are working there. And that's led to a really challenging situation with the sheriff's budget. There's basically a lot of overtime. And we've certainly been supportive of the sheriff. And we're about to be supplementing her budget for, to make sure that they have enough resources to do that. We've had a lot of challenges recently in getting personnel.
And I agree with that, too.
Yep. And so we're, I have faith that the sheriff will, will find the ways of doing that, but it's.
Hey, any other questions? I'm pleased that you're tired again, you're here, Anderson. And we have a lot of things to do. So it means the last evening is a late performance.
I am happy to have the opportunity to come out here. And, and the invitation always stands. I offer it every year. If everyone wants to sit down for a cup of coffee, have a drink, I'm always happy to come out to connect and, or have a phone call and just chat. Hope once I'm invited, it's how best we can serve our residents. So always here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very. So next, we have another special presentation. And we have Angela with us this evening with the Austin Bay Lake Improvement Association.
There we go.
Harrison, Harrison Bay, thank you. So welcome.
This is, it's great to be here. You're always really interesting. So I'm Angela Sapstrom, and I'm with the Harrison Bay Association. I'm also the city ambassador for the city. Although I have to say, when I come in here, there's joy leading up to these. A little bit more upbeat, so I think I'll take that direction. That's good. But just to quick updates, this is, I'm sorry, do we, do you have? Otherwise, I have a question.
We can do it.
Otherwise, I can just. Yeah, real quick. So I am coming with the rain barrel program. So I am a Minnesota water steward. And I, twenty twenty-three, became a water steward doing a rain barrel project where, where I think my idea, I am not a city engineer expert or devout, you know, say of the waterways. I'm just kind of an ordinary non-resident who wants to do something a little bit. And found that, that, you know, all of our lakes act drinking water. And it's just something that it's just a very easy way for, for people to do individual as students to have a rain barrel on their, to collect stormwater. So the idea is that stormwater is the number one pollutant. Stormwater is anything that comes off and runs off of the previous surface and ends up in our waterways. So we go down the street, down the driveway, down our roofs, places where we didn't have, I find it at my home there, right? The water would come and it would absorb into the ground and would be purified by the deep fluids. But because our roof's there, all the water comes out of the whole place. It creates the soil, it carries pet wastes and salt and sand and whatever directly into our, into our mix. So an easy way to combat this is a rain barrel. And this will be the third year that we've sold rain barrels. The last two partnerships were from Trista. And we would, signed up again to sell and distribute seventy-two rain barrels. These seventy-two rain barrels save over a hundred thousand gallons of stormwater a year. Just keep getting used year after year. So it really is a pretty, a pretty easy, thank you, I'm sorry. Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't send it out, so.
No, it was, it was, it was in a link and I didn't click the link right away. So my bad.
Appreciate it. So the program has three goals. The number one is to reduce that stormwater runoff. The other one is then to engage city, engage our community, right? Education and what we can do as individuals. And then number three is to promote this to be used year after year. If you find it kind of inspirational, and it's like the cost of going out to dinner, right? So we, so generous contributions from City of Mount and the city of Minutrista and, and engine counterparts, it's seventy dollars. And you have fifty-five gallon rain barrel to use year after year. We will be distributing it again this year out of the Mount parking garage. So Saturday, May thirty first, from ten to noon. All of the rain barrels are pre-ordered. We have seventy-two this year and we sell forty-five to go. So I think one of the asks that I will, will say is if we can hit your next newsletter or any email to, to keep the awareness out there. Having sold a hundred and forty-something the first year and, and again last year, too. At some point, we're going to hit a little saturation point with the number of hospitals that we can do. But hopefully, we don't have seventy-two this year. The seventy-two is shared between the cities of Minutrista and Mount. And at the end, I'll just comb through the addresses. And, and there's a thirty dollar contribution, generous contribution from Minutrista for your residents and a thirty dollar contribution from Mount for your residents. So it'll end up being, you know, under a thousand dollars for each, each city engineering combo. And just shows a lot of, I think, gives credence to the fact that this is a really good solution. Acknowledges the fact that we do have, have water issues out here. We have, and that, and that together, we can use less city water. Along with this distribution, we always have and will again this year, a setup. Something that I think is just really easy to see, when you see how it's installed and how it pumps off of the gutter. It makes it really easy for people to go home and install it. So, so that education, that demo will be there, too. I have volunteers lined up for the event. It should be fun. I'm sure we'll have some donors, too. So I'm going to stop on that, that'd be great. They make great gifts, Mother's Day gifts, Father's Day gifts, right? Let us do that. The thirty-first is amazing. So you have to give it a little early for the fathers. The end link for measures a little early. Yeah. It's going to be directed to. What, people, the pickup has been smooth. People just drive right in, be a little strange in their trucks, give them all the information they need to install. And, and there we go, save a hundred thousand gallons year after year. The, yeah, the last, the next step then would be, once it is done, and I, like I said, I'll scrub the addresses. Total number of Minutrista residents who have requested the discount.
Okay, for this, I bought three of them.
Thank you.
Come, I knew you wanted two, two of my thumbs. And I brought on two, a charity that I run. But I could water, I know, I'm a woman, if you try to propose that. And I actually met with Jane Anderson today.
This is hard to do.
Yeah. And she actually gave me the name of someone that could book it up for twenty-five dollars. So my son's got there as a runway. So I think it's wonderful, and especially when we're trying to make a difference with, you know, using water efficiently. Yeah. And it's a wonderful thing.
You can always reach out to me.
I will be doing that.
It's a little nerve-wracking to cut your brother for the first time.
It's like, do I have to cut it? Cut her?
You want to know, you want to know you're doing it right?
Yes. But I think it's, I, I can't believe you're on home in June seventy. I think you, I think she tries that. Every single person that pays for city block is.
Well, that, I mean, that is the other thing, that it, it should pay for itself, right? If you plug it in, use it, it should pay for itself.
Well, the next one is not having to haul your clothes out. You can water your little.
My notes.
Water your.
Flurry free, better for the plants. It keeps you from having the big pile of earth that's, you know, washed away next to your foundation. So it really is.
Have a, have a little bit of a, like, I think that.
All right. We have water. Awesome, thank you, thanks for, thanks for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we love this, good work, really appreciate it. So I'm assuming you want to participate.
Yeah.
Depending on the fact of the water.
Sure, all right. And we can post something on the website, too. Okay. All right. With that, then, we have nobody signed up under persons to be heard. So we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any you wish to remove? Otherwise, they consist of A, approve the work session meeting minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. B is approve the city council regular meeting minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. C is approve the aid to S task order number two for consulting services for replacing sanitary list station controls in LS number four. And LS number six, LS next to the station. Yeah, someone, come on. B is a resolution to approve claims. E is a resolution to approve the arbitrage services consulting agreement. L is the twenty twenty-five payment maintenance project and approve plans and specifications and authorize advertisements per bid. G is the resolution to purchase, to purchase a new confined space entry multi-gas detector. And H is a war agreement for sanitary sewer list station cleaning, sanitary sewer line, jet cleaning, and sanitary sewer line televising with Overly and Sons Incorporated. I is a resolution to approve the city policy for the disposal of obsolete or excess city personal property. And J is authorizing sale and disposal of surplus city equipment. Is there a motion to approve, then agenda item A, prove J? Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Need further questions? We're none, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes by both. We have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our business items. And our first business item is to declare game farm road and Blair Road and Mendocino State A route by Julie Simpson, Malkey. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here this evening. We understand it's been a long day for you.
Joyable. I had to say that I knew I hadn't worked ahead of time. I'm like, oh, I like this one. So as we discussed at the last work session, the city has some mileage available to designate new state A routes. And we had a discussion at the last work session to include Blair Road and then game farm road, the county road one ten to Blair Road, as state A routes. And the good news is, in doing so, we would be able to escape construction funds for that portion of game farm road next year, assuming we get all our council approvals in place. So before you this evening, this is the official action to designate those as state A routes. We do need to get this to Mendot by May first. So I wanted to be on the ball in case we needed to pivot and do something differently. But so included in your packet is a resolution to make those designations. We would start getting some more state A construction funds by adding these to state A routes. So we have some good news on both fronts as far as financing goals for the city. As, as we discussed at the work session, we did a preliminary review of the alignments of game farm road. We didn't see anything, any red flags as far as that segment not meeting state A standards. But we'd certainly have to go through that in detail when the time comes for construction. There was one other thing I wanted to mention. Not going to say. We may have planned. This is very forty-five. But I don't want that to get away from this discussion. We'll still have additional state A mileage left at the end of this. But this is, this is a good discussion. Oh, I remember what it was. We did talk to state A staff and have, I believe it's included in the packet, that they've, yes, it is in the packet, that they've already received this and have given a staff approval, but not to go ahead with this. But we applied the approval of a resolution this evening. We'd send that off and get the official notification from the, from Mendot. From Mendot as far as giving it out of books.
Yeah. And then also because we have a little more state A roads and miles wide, then definitely have also our, our formula.
Right.
We'll have a little bit more in terms of state A dollars.
That's correct.
Yeah. And you said we have, what, one point four? Or what do we have in our current?
We have one point eight. One point eight five, yeah. I have soft like links around, yeah, different things. So, yeah, so we have, we have more than enough mileage available to. So we still have some, some mileage left out there for the future. This development comes in more truthful and book that we can take in the right way. Okay, another road.
Great, questions? That makes perfect sense and definitely financial sense. So I think we could go ahead and make that pass that resolution to designate Blair Road as the liner collector and designate game farm road from county road one ten to Blair Road as state A routes. Thank you, Ms. Repkin, is our second. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. No, that's the other Brian. Doing Brian.
Yeah, going on.
Sorry. That is not Grimm. Thank you very much. Any other questions are coming. All those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes by both. So that, that's good news. And then I'm assuming we do still go through the four twenty-nine for a few, a couple of those properties, I believe, on game farm road?
Yes, Mayor, well, that's what we discussed at the last work session. So I wanted to, we just needed a little bit more. We needed to hone in on the scope of work heard because how centers, I just got the information back for that. So you should be seeing a task order for the feasibility report, preliminary design, building services for the project. And then the next.
Okay, so I'm done, thank you. Then we'll move on to our next business item. And I leave that discussion or basically kind of a report, isn't it? Or an update on the setting at the state legislature?
So.
Well, and supporting the draft or the.
Yep. So Madam Mayor, members of council, before you, is a resolution supporting the retention of city, of city zoning authority, which is essentially establishing our desire to maintain local control of our zoning. There's a, there's a series of bills out there currently that were, yeah. So you probably have heard of the missing middle housing bill. That was what it was called last year. This year, it's been brought back in kind of a piecemeal fashion. I believe there were about seven or eight different bills that kind of were redundant in some senses. Right now, there's four of them out there that are still being considered by the, by the Senate. So it's important that we pass this because we, we do want to maintain our local zoning authority. Some of the bills that are out there right now. Um, some of the bills that are out there right now, uh, I had this one up and now I don't have.
Send some letters already.
Yeah, we've, we've been, we've been working on it um, quite a bit. Um, but there's, there's four of them out there. I'll see if I can go off memory. One of them is related to aesthetics and, and telling us that we can't have aesthetic standards, which we, we have a little bit of. Um, one of them is related to parking and the ability to, to say, yep, you need, if you have a commercial business, you need this much parking or you have um, an apartment complex, you need this much parking. Um, that's, that's something that, that we think is important. Um, couple of them uh, reduce our ability to say what is in certain zoning districts. So some of them make, make you put additional like multifamily housing in like a residential or R one district. We'd have to allow it by statute and we won't have an authority to, to say, oh, we want R one to be more lower density housing than R two, R three. Um, so that's essentially what, what a lot of these bills are. They're still in the mix. Um, there is bipartisan support. Some of these are authored by Republicans, some of them are authored by Democrats, some of them are authored by both, co-authored by both. So it's uh, in a, in a legislature that is pretty tight as far as the majority goes or it's tied. Um, you know, some of these bills, there's, there is a risk of them passing because it's something that kind of common ground. So it's important and what this resolution shows is that we want to maintain that local zoning authority. So um, likely, I think at the next meeting, you'll probably see another uh, resolution related to some of the uh, abilities for cities to require HOAs in like a PUD situation. Um, there's bills that are trying to take that away from us and, and get rid of the common area uh, spaces. So some of the HOAs, I know some are familiar with, with HOAs here. Um, you know, a lot of the HOAs have common areas that the HOAs have to maintain. And that's because, you know, somebody has to own it. City doesn't want to own it and, and, and have maintenance costs for those. Some of those rights are, are looking to be taken away. So likely at the next meeting, you'll have a resolution um, saying that we want to, you know, we, we're not in favor of that bill either. So there seems to be a lot of, of, of bills out there right now that are eroding our, our local authority that we want to, you know, obviously be against. So and we've talked to um, Representative Myers and Senator Johnson Stewart about this. And they understand our viewpoint on that. And I think they've been very receptive to, a lot of the communities that they represent are in the same boat as us. So I think they're getting hit with a lot of municipalities in their districts that oppose these bills. So hopefully that resonates and, and that can help them not pass.
But the other thing too that's important, does that mean neighbors know? And people that aren't mayors or council members, they need to also express their concern regarding these bills because it really does strip local authority away from us. And uh, it can also undermine our compliance plan that we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars always on in years to create, um, to create. So um, this is all under the premise that it's going to create affordable housing. And it's, it's not, that's not the, it, it's not going to create affordable housing. And um, so we're concerned about that. We're concerned about developers coming in and even able to do just about anything they want to do. And we welcome developers and we even welcome affordable housing. About we need to have some control over it. And we need to be able to say, you can do this, but you can't do this. And you can do this and we'll work with you on this, I'll work with you on that. But um, with somebody's bill, it just would be pretty much, they can do cut, loss, whatever. So we're concerned about it. Um, as Catherine mentioned, um, we've been in meetings with our senators, we've been in contact with um, Representative Myers. They've been very um, supportive so far, so we hope that that will help. But again, you know, one more in the house and one more in the Senate. So we'll see what this goes. We'll keep it posted.
Yeah, and just as a note, the legislative session is, will wrap up in about six weeks. So we still, there's still a lot of time that they're working on things. So you're going to see a lot of things kind of hot and heavy coming at you potentially. So if there's things that maybe um, you know, I, I think I have good, good viewpoints from the, the council. I might send a letter to uh, our senator or representative based on our interest, based on my, you know, kind of interpretation of what's going on here. But a lot of them is, you know, the zoning authority stuff is, is quite important. And as the mayor alluded, you know, there's already a process that is quite, you know, labor intensive to, to figure out what we're going to do in our city and how the infrastructure is going to grow. Um, with the city, a lot of these would, would really throw a wrench in all those, you know, planning activities.
So I'll take it mostly, but I guess too, um, Jasper's kind of looking at, is it okay if we send letters? Sometimes these things happen really quick and we have to react with. So we just kind of want to do the yes or no, or no, we like their proposals or we not.
Hi, Jasper, some time.
Oh, absolutely.
Now please.
I think we're going to have to make a few of them in your house.
Maybe we can get a letter to our neighbors. We see yours.
Well, last year you posted something on social media about this.
Yeah, that might be good to do again. Um, just because I think if more people in, like I said, other than mayors and council members um, weigh in and contact their legislators. Uh, so with that, I would also say here's, here's our senator, here's our representative. And they're supportive, but sometimes if they get letters um, emails from other residents, they can go to their counterparts, say, look, here's, it's not just the mayors, it's not just the council members. It's residents who might be, they're concerned too.
I really came through when it was working the twenty forty plan, you know, to do a survey of residents. And the number one thing was they wanted the rural character. And that was all that was the number one thing.
Yeah.
Just a few years ago, if you're staying, even if they lived in really against their status, really. This will just destroy them. So I, I think it would resonate with the residents.
I'm sure somebody has listened, but. It, like I said, it, it's fallen under the pretense, um, I want to say pretense, um, of being, being able to build affordable housing. They're estimating that there is about a hundred thousand affordable units that are needed in the state. Um, but what they fail to do is they fail to say where they're needed. And they fail to say at what, what, um, you know, what cost uh, would they sell at? And there's no parameters. So in other words, if they came in here and said, well, we're going to build it. Um, and what if it ends up being that they have to sell those units at five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, that's not affordable, you know? So those are some of the things in, that I see. They're not even putting any kind of parameters or any kind of um, requirements on. So if you want to build affordable housing and you want to come to Minnesota, hey, come. But then build affordable housing, you know, and, and that won't happen. It can't happen um, unless they get huge subsidies. And then what are they going to do? They can't afford our water bills. I mean, we just, we just talked about that. And then I also, I also mentioned in one of my emails and letters to the senators, to the senators, what, how can we plan for um, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure? How can we even um, plan for fire and police protection? I mean, it's hard enough to get more police officers, you know, on board. But all of a sudden we had, you know, sold a lot more residents. And now we don't have a fire protection because we don't have the water from pressure that we need. I mean, there's all these other issues that um, that I don't think a lot of them even know about or think about. And um, how can they afford a house when, when the sewer and water bills are going to be three, four hundred dollars a month? I mean, it's, it's, it's real issues that I don't think that is being considered. Long-term issues, how can they afford to maintain a, if it's a five hundred, six hundred dollar house, even if it's subsidized, how can they afford to pay the property taxes? How can they afford to pay the insurance on it? Those are all things that really need to be addressed before, before passing this stuff. But there is a lot of state legislators that don't understand that.
And those are the moments of talking.
Yeah. So anyhow. Any other questions? See if someone um, mentioned about it. So are any other um, staff reports then? We'll go on to staff reports. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yeah. All right, then is there a motion to approve the resolution supporting retention of city zoning authority? Then thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second? Thank you. Oh, yeah, all of the folks, no one's opposed. I didn't think so. All right, now we'll move on to the staff report.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have a town hall event. We've talked a little bit about it on the last couple of meetings we've had on Monday, April fourteenth, from six to eight. Yeah, here at, in the city council chamber. So um, Mayor Wayland will be kind of leading the charge. We'll be talking about the fire partnership discussions we've been having. And then also kind of a continuation of the discussion that we had about the, the water treatment plant that we're proposing to build. So hopefully we can get some people to attend and give us some input. Um, I'm guessing mostly about the water treatment plant. But really, just to kind of get more information out to the public about why we're doing it. You know, how much it's going to cost, how we're going to potentially maybe build um, the residents and see if we get some input, which we likely will. So and on that note too, I can give a little bonding update because there's been a little bit of movement. Um, I think two Fridays ago, I got a message from um, Senator Johnson Stewart. And she's kind of selecting our, our, our project along with another project to kind of move, try to move forward. Um, in the Senate side, uh, what that means is maybe it's unknown. Uh, because there's, there's conflicting uh, reports on how much of a bonding bill each the Senate and the House want to do. And they're talking about maybe doing a, a split bill a little bit this year and a little bit next year or all of it next year. Um, in the direction that I've kind of given the, the senator and the uh, representative is we want it this year. Uh, because next year we won't have a project. So we'll see. It doesn't sound like much. It looks like the Senate's looking at about seven hundred million um, in twenty twenty five potentially. And, and what that means is about five hundred of that is tied up into state projects like um, University of Minnesota and Mendot, those types of things, to fund those things. So there's really only about two hundred million to play with for low, local municipalities. Um, there's, I want to say two point, I'm going off memory, two point six billion dollars of water infrastructure requests and over eight billion dollars of requests overall. So, you know, you have two hundred million dollars trying to fit that in, you know, that's a, just a drop in the bucket. So it's not, you know, that optimistic, but we really appreciate the senator bringing forward our project along, you know, whittling it down to just two in, in her district. So um, and the same with, uh, I, I spoke with Representative Myers this afternoon too. And he said he's gonna, he's gonna try to get, move our project along. But he's talking, maybe each representative might have access to, you know, a million, a million five. So we'll have to do an evaluation if we are, if we do get in there for a million, million five to see what that actually does to our project cost. Because I think, remember talking about the PFA piece and, or the, the congressionally directed spending piece, which we looked at. If we get a million dollars, that might drive the project costs up more than what we get, you know, on a twenty two million dollar project. So we'll have to do that evaluation. Um, the other things that they're considering is, you know, there's a one point five million dollar um, project budget. Is it, is it better to allocate that to a smaller project because you can actually do it? And you have more of an impact or to some of these larger infrastructure projects? So those are the things that the, our representatives are kind of dealing with right now. Hopefully, you know, things can kind of shift. I know there's been some economic things occurring in the last week or so that maybe aren't favorable for passing a bonding bill too. So there's all these other inputs that are occurring that um, you know, maybe aren't as timely as they should be. So we'll see. I'll continue to provide updates as they come in. But we're still in the running. Um, and uh, as I said before, we have about six weeks uh, before the session ends. They could extend it if they need to, but we'll, we'll see and follow it closely. That's all I have.
Um, any other staff reports? And do you think we need a um, representative for the planning commission? In uh, the last four, Monday, fifteen months?
Twenty two.
Twenty?
Twenty eight.
Who might be in the. Who hasn't done yet? Go on.
Uh, I'm the best, do we? Really.
And. Yeah. I might, I might. Okay. Okay, well, I'll come here and have a go. Okay, and then I'll just check. Okay, so for now Claudia um, she'll let you know in a night. Feel more glamorous in Australia than India. All right, um, any other staff reports? Your none, um, just a, I'll do a quick report and then we'll go on to other committees. So um, the fire partnership meeting went well, uh, went better than previous meetings because we actually made a little bit of midway. Um, so we talked more about the joint powers agreement itself. There won't go into all those details, but um, we sort of semi decided or agreed that um, mound would get two votes, Minnesota would get two votes. And uh, think Bonnie and Spring Park, and this is kind of preliminary, will each get one vote. It's based on contributions. And so since mound and Minnesota will be the biggest uh, contributors, financial contributors, uh, it was decided that we would each get two. And it's kind of based on percentage of contribution and it was capped at forty nine percent. So in other words, if Minnesota ever were to become more than a fifty percent contributor, we would still be capped at forty nine percent in terms of votes. Uh, however, we also capped it at um, some of the smaller cities were concerned about annual budget increases. And we talked about, well, if the budget ever were to be approved with more than four percent increase to the fire budget, then it would have to be a super majority. In other words, we would need one of the smaller cities to agree as well. And we looked at half in, you know, um, budgets and how much they have been increased. And really, it's very, very seldom if ever it's been increased by more than four percent. And then the other thing we talked about, I can't remember, what else did we talk about? Um, voting, oh, and then we didn't get to the formula. So the formula, um, there was some very little discussion on that. Uh, mom wasn't prepared to have that discussed. But we will be talking about it at the upcoming because uh, that's a very important part of the, of the joint powers agreement. And then um, I believe Kathleen and myself and Jasper will be meeting um, with one of the cities um, Wednesday morning. And Jasper and myself and boys think Bonnie um, regarding the formula that, that there were numbers like three or four different scenarios and you were on board with any one of them because they're not impacted very much. And um, I think our most impact would be what, two and a half percent?
Yeah, that'd be the most right now. I think we were planning on three as a planning number, um, but it's going to be less than that.
Yes, would be to our overall level. Now it would be the best, something like, and so that's the other reason we wanted to have the um, town hall meeting. Invite residents in, let them know what's happening, why it's happening and um, what potential, uh, financial impacts this in the city. And we'll go over that probably things like that. And um, and then also I would, um, I was at Paul's retirement um, event, which was very, very well attended. I, I think Ally said, I mean, I mean, it was, it was a lot of people. A lot of people here, a lot of police officers from all different um, organizations. So it was a real testament to Paul's um, uh, work here and commitment, not only to our city, but just as a, as a police um, officer too. And uh, so it was, it was really a great event, very, very well attended. And uh, I think it meant a lot to the former chief of law. So and then um, like I said, we also, uh, when we had our meeting with Saint Bonnie, we kind of touched on, and this is maybe another thing we'll add to our work session. Um, we kind of touched on the water situation. And um, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail tonight, but I asked Jasper if he would put that on a work session because I think we're making some good strides there. Um, with the, the mayor, he was very interested in talking to us. He talked about interconnects. And there's three more interconnects that we do and, and he is, I mean, like preliminary proposal, uh, he's very interested in it. So we'll talk about that at a future work session. Um, that's, and then I'll be going to the Northwest League NYC. That's it. So um, no people have been on vacation, but anything? And then the next fire partnership commission meeting is uh, April fifteenth, that day, by the way. You know? You know?
Oh.
Okay. You've been on vacation, too?
Mm-hmm.
And Claudia?
Oh.
And so then, like, feel like these will be any time. I will just say that they are having their twenty-fifth anniversary gala coming up in October. Amazing. Yeah. Martha Gall, there's, uh, October twenty-sixth, celebrating twenty-five. Okay, sweet. Right? Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. Great meeting, uh, staff and council. Really appreciate it. Um, appreciate it. Sergeant Brown's stepping in. So, um, that, is there a motion for adjournment?
Oh, no.
Thank you, Ms. Victory. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Victory. This is a great, we should tour. All of the tips, they can sign a tie. I, our, our, motion passes by all. We'll see you again in a couple of weeks. Well, next week, next week. On the fourteenth.